Call the meeting order, please. Roll call.
Donahue?
Here.
McKnight?
Here.
Roa?
Here.
Vogel?
Here.
Sterns?
Here.
If you could, please stand at the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So we're going to begin, we're going to make a couple of changes on the agenda. So, Council, if you wouldn't mind bearing with me. And Andy, we're going to go ahead and do the oath of office.
Yep, so actually, yep. Number two on your agenda this evening, Council, is the oath of office to Patrick Wiley. Back at our last meeting, I had announced the appointment of Captain Wiley as to be our next Fire Chief effective Monday, 24th, which will be the last day of Fire Chief Haskell's tenure here. And I'd asked for a concurrence of my appointment at that last meeting. Tonight, we're swearing Captain Wiley in, and Captain Wiley, if you'd step forward. You're both will give the oath here at the middle of the room. But Pat comes to us with 18 years of service to our fire department, five of which he has served as captain, and currently oversees our emergency medical services, sort of the operations within the department. We were, Pat, we had several interested candidates, and I'm very proud of our department. I had Gary Johnson and I met with multiple candidates, met with every firefighter in the station to get a sense of the vision and the future for our department, and then did second and did interviews with all the interested candidates. And I'm very proud to appoint Pat. And so Pat is here with his parents, who I just met a short while ago, and three of his children. So, welcome, and thank you for joining us, and thank you to our firefighters in the crowd, guys on and women on duty there at the back of the room, and some of our off-duty guys here as well. So, thank you for coming. So, Your Honor, why don't you go ahead?
Okay. Thanks for being here. If you could just repeat after me, and I will go slow.
Raise your right hand.
Um, raise your... I'm gonna let you do it. Just say, "I do," we're done, we're gone.
I'm in control. Go.
You raise your right hand. Get rid of these things, I can hold this. I, Patrick Wiley?
I, Patrick Wiley.
Wiley, I'm sorry. Solemnly swear and affirm...
Solemnly swear and affirm.
That I will support...
That I will support.
Obey and defend...
Obey and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And the Constitution of this Commonwealth.
And I will discharge the duty...
And I will discharge its duty.
...to my office with fidelity.
With this... With duties of this office with fidelity.
Congratulations. Let's do the real quote, because this one I've been just tested for the tires and the pine. I'm not going to say about tomorrow, but, Pat, I don't normally do this, but you have your three children here. So if you'd like to have them come up, we have a pin on behalf of Meadville City Council. It's our city pin, and we thought you might like to have this to remember your father's occasion. And I'll tell you what, I'm going to have your dad give it to you, okay? Congratulations on the father's point. And there you go. Thank you. You're welcome. Congratulations. Go ahead and say a few words, and then Council will welcome you all. Well, first, I'd like to thank everyone, the support from the station and from my family. This is going to be a long haul, but together, we're going to work as a team. We're going to get this figured out, and it's going to be a great department. So, thank you. Hold on, I'm going to start with you.
Congratulations, welcome. Thank you for your service.
Shaun?
Congratulations, Pat. Thanks.
Larry?
Congratulations, thank you. That's wishes to you. Your Honor, Chief Haskell, who retires on Monday, is asked to say a few words. That's all right by you?
Absolutely.
Is this on? Can you hear me?
That's for Armstrong purposes. Armstrong heard you just went.
All right. It's like deja vu again. 32 years ago, this is where I attended my first council meeting, and it's rather ironic that this would be my last council meeting, being these guys even moved to a new building, and yet here I am back at this place. So, first of all, I want to wish Pat the best of luck. I think he'll do a fine job. He was a fine choice. I think he was the right man for the job, and I have all the faith in him that he'll be able to run the department and keep the guys safe. So, wise decision. As far as me, I've had a great 32-year career. I want to thank the city for 32 great years of employment. I was honored to serve this community as a firefighter, and thank you very much. I appreciate it. Good luck, Patrick. Best to you.
To show our appreciation, we're going to go ahead and do the resolutions. So you guys are welcome to take off if you don't want to stay for the entire meeting.
So, Council, the last item under New Business, 10E, is a resolution recognizing Chief Haskell upon his retirement. And I had asked Katie if she would mind if I would read that resolution this evening. Chief Haskell has a net for timing, so not only was he appointed under unique circumstances and after the untimely passing of Chief Hedrick, as I was a new and green city manager, in fact, still interim city manager, just a few months after Joe Chris retired. And Evan, I really appreciate you stepping up, taking the leadership reins. Very, very proud of your service and your commitment to the community. And so this is a resolution of the Council of the City of Meadville recognizing Fire Chief Evan Haskell upon his retirement. Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas Evan Haskell has served as a valued employee of the City of Meadville Fire Department for 32 years, and whereas Mr. Haskell began working for the City of Meadville as a firefighter on August 24, 1988, and whereas Mr. Haskell has promoted, was promoted to the position of captain and began serving in that capacity in 2000, and whereas Mr. Haskell, upon the untimely passing of Fire Chief Hedrick, was tapped to serve his department and community as acting fire chief, a position he held from December 16, 2014, to January 4, 2016, and whereas Mr. Haskell, demonstrating his leadership and expertise, was appointed Fire Chief on January 4, 2016, and whereas Mr. Haskell has performed the duties of his office with dedication, thoughtfulness, and professionalism, and whereas Mr. Haskell is elected to retire from active employment from the City of Meadville effective August 24, 2020. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the City of Meadville Fire Chief Evan Haskell is hereby commended for his many years of dedicated service to this community and its citizens, and be it further resolved by the City Council of the City of Meadville that the best wishes of the city are extended to Evan Haskell for every success in the future.
Thank you.
Was that, that was Jim and Larry?
Yes. Jim made the motion, Larry seconded. Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Evan, thank you so much.
Thank you, guys.
It's been, we've been here a long time together, so...
Yes, we have.
Long time. So, enjoy retirement.
Thank you very much.
And don't let people talk you into doing a lot of volunteers. But I do need a yard move if you want to walk. Okay. If you would like to stay, you're more than welcome to. I'll give you a few minutes if you'd like to go ahead and leave and move on with...
A lot newer.
Oh, yeah. Why don't we go ahead and do that?
I think someone asked for a picture. Are we trying another picture? Is that what you were asking?
Do you want another picture up front? I'm not sure if you knew they took pictures while you were...
I got pictures during.
What's that?
I got pictures during.
During. Do you want any other picture?
That's good for...
I'm sorry. Would you like any other picture?
I believe we're just going to, I'm going to take ones with the crew.
That'd be great. All right. Congratulations, Pat. Looking forward to seeing you. All right. Happy you.
I'm trying to tell you.
Happy you. Good luck. Okay. Do we have anybody signed up for public comment?
I'm going to say no, I didn't check on me.
Do you need him to sign this? Or does he do it?
I didn't do it.
Is anyone of this?
I've already got Pat to sign it, but if you're coming in tomorrow, I can just have you sign it then.
No one signed in for public comment, Your Honor.
Andy, if you'd give us a COVID-19 update?
So, Your Honor, again, this is just a standing agenda item since Council had declared disaster emergency with respect to the COVID-19 pandemic. Just a reminder that we still operate under that emergency declaration. I don't have any specific updates to report. I will note, though, as we, as Council has taken to reminding citizens and asking citizens to continue to practice social distancing, mask-wearing, hand-washing hygiene, today Meadville Medical Center, Philip Handoff, the CEO of Meadville, our own Meadville Medical Center, issued a sort of a statement asking the community to do the same, that the hospital is seeing sort of a local, sort of flare-up, if you will, of local cases, and they have asked our citizens to and residents of Crawford County to respect those practices. And so I just share that as a reminder as well. That's all I have there.
Notices of executive sessions, Katie.
Your Honor, an executive session was held on August 5, 2020, to discuss real estate and litigation.
Approved minutes of August 5. Motion, please. Motion. Second? Second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye. Katie, communications letter from Common Roots and the Crawford County Coalition on Housing.
I just wanted to note that those both came in after...
Your Honor, we actually had received two letters, one from Julie Wilson, the president of Common Roots, and one from Guy McUmber, the president of Crawford County Coalition on Housing Needs. Both letters were received prior to our August 5 council meeting, but after the cutoff for agenda items, and they were placed on the August 19 agenda as a result. Dear members of Meadville City Council, we write to express our mutual support for both the Common Roots and Crawford County Coalition on Housing Needs proposals to utilize CDBG funding in order to address the city's housing problems. Both of our projects align with CDBG's first national objective to benefit low and moderate income persons while contributing to housing revitalization in the area. Specifically, both projects will benefit the growing number of low-income residents in Meadville who are struggling to pay their basic human needs, including housing. They've referenced some data from a recent study by the Crawford Coalition on Housing Needs, specific to Crawford County, as well as referencing those measures in the Crawford County Housing Plan. They say that both projects will also benefit the efforts of local housing and human service organizations who are struggling to find their clients safe, affordable housing, and both projects align with the city's comprehensive plan.
We have a letter for the...
Your Honor, this is an email that was again received prior to the August 5 meeting, but after the cutoff point. It is in relation to the changes made to the appointment policy for authorities, boards, and commissions. In the email, they have pointed out, or Herb Reedy has pointed out, that the idea that you don't need to be a resident of a municipality in order to make decisions on its behalf as an appointed board member, that is vested with power from elected members who are required to be residents, is not only a dangerous loophole, it's also racist, classist, and just wrong. Whereas employees should be favored if they live in city limits with bonuses and other means, as it means they have a real, true part in the community, ABC members should be required to meet the same requirements as the municipality that is appointing them, which is to be residents, not just property or business owners. To do otherwise is corruption. He also notes that by doing that, you're encouraging the white flight to burning township in West Mead and allowing them to control the fate of those who actually live within the city of Meadville.
No other comments or letters?
Nope, that was a...
Andy, manager's report?
Your Honor, Council, listed on our agenda here is a presentation by Calmar Senior Housing Development as an update. And Mike, if you want to make your way over to the podium, I'll do a little bit of a lead-in. Mike, I'll let him introduce himself in a second, but is here representing Calmar, developers who are developing the residential housing, senior housing on Pine, between Pine and Arch Streets. We had asked Calmar to come this evening to give us an update on the project publicly. Under New Business, you'll see is a discussion about a proposed extension of real estate tax abatement, a window to apply for real estate tax abatement. We'll get more in detail into that. But the quick story, by way of background, is that Calmar came, when the development was initially proposed, came to the city council several years ago, probably four or five years ago at this point, and talked about the development and the need for tax abatement to make that a successful project. The city worked cooperatively with Crawford Central School District, as well as Crawford County, to implement a five-year tax abatement program, sort of a sliding scale, and that was approved by ordinance of council. That ordinance required the project to be completed by October 7, 2020. At least, that was the deadline established in the ordinance to apply for, to issue a certificate of occupancy and to trigger the five-year tax abatement window. Obviously, we're here in mid-August, and because of the pandemic and other things, Calmar won't meet that date. We'll discuss further here under New Business, but we thought this would be a good opportunity to bring Calmar to council and the community, just give an update on the project status, the timeline, and then we'll discuss further under New Business. Mike?
Good evening, Council. My name is Mike Kuzmusky. I'm the director of construction for Calmar in the East Coast. As it sits right now, the project is approximately 80, 81% complete. We anticipate, and with the help of the municipality, applying for our first TCO for our first wing of the project in October of this year. We anticipate having the entire project, and I say entire, the entire, as far as we can, based off of weather, complete by the end of this year. We'd like the building to be fully TCO'd by the end of the year, and then depending on...
Mike, for people that don't know what TCO stands for...
Temporary Certificate of Occupancy. So we know that there are certain items that are going to need to occur in order to get a final certificate of occupancy, you know, landscaping, grass to be grown, certain things like that. Depending on how weather goes and such, we know that might be difficult to get this fall, but we would like to have the building occupied or starting to be occupied in October. As it stands right now, the last numbers I received was that the building had garnished about 220 inquiries from the community. The building is currently about 32% pre-leased, as it sits right now. So, as, and we tend to see a bell, a curve, you know, as the building gets closer to opening, that curve will, you know, exponentially go. You know, most of our buildings get to about a 50 or 60% occupancy when they open. So, other than that, you know, we, the pause gave us a little hiccup, and then after the pause, there's been some issues in sourcing materials. We've gotten past those issues, and we're ready to go to complete the project in this year.
Mike, I appreciate it. I had the opportunity to go to New York and seen some of the projects that were done in New York. Actually, three of them up in New York. And I remember when we first discussed this, the past Council said it would probably never happen, and we're here today seeing the actual product, you know, project coming to fruition. 32% is already...
Pre-leased.
Pre-leased.
Correct. I mean, that's a great, that says a lot about the community and a lot about the viability of the project. You know, to have that, you know, before the building's even complete is great.
So if someone has an interest in possibly looking at them, who do they contact?
So we have, we have signage on our site. There is a number on the sign that they'll actually call. They'll get into our call center. As we get closer, I would say late September, what we tend to like to ask the municipality for is the ability to use, set up a model, usually in a spot of the wing that's going to be, get the TCO for, you know, the soonest, that's the farthest along, that's safe, that we can access the site without construction activities impacting, you know, we always worry about the residents for safety. So we would like to usually do that, but that's kind of the process.
So you would like an extension?
That is correct.
Okay. And requesting an extension, have you factored in everything so that if we granted an extension, say to the end of the year, that we're not going to get to the end of the year and say there's something else?
Yeah, so the extension we'd be seeking is actually a year from today, you know, just for the fact of the landscaping and the need to establish the, some of the items that, you know, that are weather-dependent. The building will be complete by the end of the year. It's some of the ancillaries on the outside of the building that are necessary for a full certificate of occupancy.
Okay, so end of '21.
Would probably, when we, the resolution that, there is a draft resolution under New Business, would, there's a date, it's a blank right in there now, but I, staff will recommend probably in October, one year from the, the current deadline is October 7, 2020. We'll probably recommend October 7, 2021 as a one-year extension. Mike, can you remind us the number of units, number of garages?
So right now...
Construction cost, maybe?
Sure. The project has 128 units. There's 62 garages, and the construction cost, including site work, was about $11.9 That figure fluctuates with COVID. Thank you, COVID.
What are the units anticipated to rent for?
The unit, the general rental, and I'm the construction director, so this is just secondary information that I get, is generally between 900 and 1100 a unit. I think on this building, there's three unit types. There's a one-bedroom, one bathroom, a two-bedroom, one bathroom, and a two-bedroom, one and a half bath.
And Mike, also, this is a senior living 55-plus.
So this is age-restricted. So all residents have to be 55 years or older in order to apply. It meets our programming. Each one of these buildings is not just independent living. There is, I call them a cruise director. We have a 55, Connect 55 program, which is basically a program that gets all of the residents engaged and out of their units, and it could be anything from trips to the mall to, you know, cards to, our buildings also include core spaces for libraries, salons, game rooms, all those types of set, different services, that are all inclusive in their rents.
You going to have an open house sometime?
We would love to have an open house. So really, it depends on the municipality. You know, I think we would work with the city, with Andy and Gary, to make sure that the wing that we want to open first is safe to people, for people to access prior to that, but yes, we'd love to have an open house.
I'm just curious, I understand there's added causes in the pandemic. Why do you really, I understand what you're saying that you need the extension for, but I don't understand, being in business, why this wasn't something you may have looked further ahead or had money set aside to, in case something happens?
Oh, this is, this is not a money issue, by any means. There...
Well, if you're asking, it is money, if you're asking for a tax break, that is, that's a money issue.
Okay.
So I'm just concerned, or questioned, why, why the city, the residents should be holding that?
So if I might initially, so prior council already authorized the five-year tax abatement. All three taxing bodies concurred and passed resolutions. The action, the extension, the council's action isn't to go beyond the five years, it's just, it's just extending the start date by which that clock starts. So the existing ordinance that council had passed, they had to have essentially completed the project and received their final certificate of occupancy by this October 7, 2020 deadline. The action we would be taking would be extend the deadline, which, to issue essentially that final certificate of occupancy, and then start the five-year clock. So, and we're not extending the actual length of the abatement period or the amount or percentage of abatement, just the window by which they can apply for a set of abatement.
Okay.
You did have, like, unforeseen environmental problems?
We did. We did.
County picked up the tab.
Well, I believe that was part of the initial project, was that the old Talon Building site that was there, that there were some foundations that were on the, under the ground that nobody knew what they were. They were pretty substantial. What we thought was going to take us four to six weeks, took us four months. Some of those foundations went up to 12 feet deep, and were anywhere from four to six feet in width, something I don't think you'd build today, but was built 100 years ago. So...
Any other questions?
Mike, we appreciate you coming down.
Thank you.
Pleased that you chose.
We're very excited about the project, you know, the city has been great to us, and we just want to say thank you.
We appreciate you choosing Meadville, because you could have went anywhere in western Pennsylvania or even eastern PA. So thanks for choosing Meadville.
We appreciate it.
Any other questions? Andy?
So, Your Honor, I have a number of just other general updates that I'll provide to Council. Once I find my very well-organized notes. There we go. You are aware, Council, that we, we actually just finished up, or will be finishing up, paving that was paid for by local federal aid route, which is a federal funding source that paved this summer, Tara Street, Allegheny Street, Portional Limber Road, Leslie Road, North Main, Diamond Park, South Main, Grove Streets. We did apply, we had an opportunity to apply for a future funding round, and we, staff submitted recently an application for funding, approximately a request of $1.7 million for Water Street between Willa to Randolph, Poplar Street, Liberty to Park Avenue, Jefferson Street, State Street to Limber Road, and then Market Street from North Street to Randolph. These are actually designated routes, that are designated as local federal aid routes, and the program provides 100% federal funding. Our matches the engineering and inspection costs. We won't know for some time whether or not we're successful in obtaining those funds. There is a putt, I think, of, excuse me, 2.5, just under 3 million, maybe, 2.5 or 2.8 million for the entire Northwest Pennsylvania Rural Planning Organization. If we were to be successful, we'll certainly report back to Council, and if the soonest that we would pave, and I doubt it would be this soon, but the soonest possible would be the 2022 season. But that all depends on whether or not, again, we're awarded funding, and there's contracting periods and a whole bunch of design phases as well. But I just wanted to report that to Council that we are going after additional funding. At our last meeting, Council, you had inquired about, I did a report just on revenue, status of revenue through July, and had reported that earned income tax revenue, as compared to this period last year, was down about $22,000 in that real estate collection through July 30th, was down about $53,000. And you had inquired about the parking fund. And so I did provide notes. So metered lot revenue is down, of course, $8,000 from the year prior. Metered street revenue, so all our on-street meters are down $33,000 year-to-date in terms of collective revenue. That's literally just the quarters plugged into the meters on lots and streets. And then our reserve parking, particularly in the Market Square parking ramp, is down by $5,200. So year-to-date revenue through July in the parking fund was down about $45,000, and actually revenue, expenses exceed revenue by $77,000. So it's sort of a negative balance in the parking fund, or a negative operating expense right now. And we should note, however, that parking fines, so the parking tickets and citations, that revenue does not come into the parking fund, but comes into the general fund. And in fact, the overall motor vehicle violations, which includes parking fines, is down $28,000 from the year prior. So this is really COVID-related, right? We ceased enforcement. Obviously, there was much less activity in downtown and the central business district between March and June for sure, and then we had ceased enforcement for, until roughly about July 1st or so. So I just want to report that those revenues are in fact down. If you noticed pulling into the meeting this evening, the Water Street Traffic Signal Replacement Project has begun. The general contractor was Bronder Technical Services. They see they've done some site work here at this intersection. There are three intersections, Arch and Water, Chestnut and Water, and Center Street and Water, which will begin an essentially complete replacement of everything you see there. So new pool foundations, new pools, new mast arms, new signal heads, new signal controllers, new pedestrian push buttons, new crosswalks, new ADA ramps. Those intersections will essentially be completely rebuilt, the infrastructure of, and the traffic signal infrastructure, this fall. The project began just this week. We're, we'll be issuing a press release here by the end of the week with some additional details, and providing contact information to the businesses. We don't, we really don't expect major closures of those. There will be temporary lane restrictions, and those will be reported as best we can as the project develops. What we do... What we did discover in our field walk is that most likely the Chestnut Street intersection, Chestnut and Water, will have to become a temporary three-way stop intersection for a period of several months. In this particular instance, in that location, that intersection, uh, because it's so tight, the buildings are so close, the new infrastructure is going in the exact same spot as the old infrastructure. Whereas at the end of the two intersections, the new pool foundations may be offset and we have room to put the new infrastructure in place before you take the old out, that's not possible in Chestnut and Water, and so we'll have to take all the old infrastructure out, make it a temporary three-way stop sign intersection, and then they'll construct the new infrastructure. Um, so that, again, that is underway and will continue through the fall as long as weather supports it. Biscayne boat launch reconstruction project, we've had the field work. We expect, we don't know the exact timing, there's still, still some permit work that I think we're waiting on, um, but we expect that to only be a two-day closure, best-case scenario, weather supporting, so there's others, that'll physically be a hard closure. There'll still be some workaround that they can work around with the launch open, but we will fully report that out once we know the exact dates. Mary Ann's here this evening, but she's asked me to share, um, it was at your last meeting that council, we reviewed, um, the city's 2021 CDBG allocations, or I guess it's technically federal fiscal year 2020. The city's proposed entitlement of $308,341, and we reviewed the various projects, paving, roof replacement, emergency shelter for the Craft County Coalition on Housing, code enforcement, improvements at Hyde Cooper Park, and some master planning. Those are the projects that council reviewed, has been submitted to the county for the second public hearing, which will be held on Thursday, August 27th at 6:00 PM. That will be a virtual meeting, and the information for interested citizens can be found on the Crawford County Planning Commission's webpage. And so again, that is, and they'll accept written comment through September 1st, 2020, but again, the virtual meeting, uh, the second public hearing is Thursday, August 27th at 6:00 PM. The Redevelopment Authority at their meeting last week finalized guidelines for what they called the RDA, uh, the COVID-19 Working Capital Loan Fund, which will provide, uh, funds to both businesses in the city and in the county with working capital funds. Mary Ann, do you want to just briefly discuss quickly the terms of those?
Uh, sure. Uh, so it's a 1% interest loan up to $25,000, uh, it's a three-year term. The first six months of the loan are interest-free, next six months are interest-only payments, and then after that year has expired, it's full interest and principal payments on the-
So anyone interested in that program can, can contact Mary Ann, there's information on the city's website, the redevelopment portion of the city's website. Um, there are lots of funding sources out there, or there have been at least, between federal programs, Paycheck Protection Program, the Commonwealth has their own, uh, program, the county has a loan program or a grant program now through CDBG funds, so, um, we encourage, um, businesses what that needs, small businesses what that need, to, to either contact Mary Ann to talk about that program. The Port Street Footwood Bridge Project is proceeding, is frankly nearly done. The contractor has mostly demobilized as it began site, um, restoration. Uh, there's some additional fence work that we want to do and that leads up to the bridge abutments, um, so the project is not open, but we're, the project is nearing completion and we will certainly share that with council and the public. And Lee, you had expressed interest in working together on a ribbon-cutting ceremony of some sort with, with neighbors and other stakeholders, and we're getting closer to that. And just by way, a brief update, the strategic management planning project, we're slightly behind schedule. Uh, the first phase, though, is to deliver five-year financial projections. Debbie and I had a conference call with them just earlier this week and have a draft that we're reviewing and will provide comment. We may present that information as soon as the September 2nd, um, council meeting, but we'll let you know. And then there's sort of the economic development component, I know we have a staff meeting to review some stuff as well, so that is moving along. Uh, so your honor, that's all I have in terms of general updates.
Counsel, any questions for Andy?
The footbridge, how can we make sure that doesn't happen again? What are we doing to?
Um, I don't know if you want to-
I mean, it just rusted out more, we can-
It was a wooden surface, and this is an open-grade surface, so, um, it minimizes the need for, essentially salt and de-icing. It was the salt that really rotted that out, just kind of hung out in the, in the structure, in the substructure and rotted everything out. So this is an open-grade system, and it allows the snow to just kind of go through, minimize any de-icing that you need, so that should absolutely minimize any chemical decomposition or anything that might happen moving forward.
We have it designed by a Norman engineer who actually understands ice and snow?
Ashley Porter, yes.
And, and that wooden deck, right, would then trap, would hold moisture, trap moisture, where the, the open deck will promote a lot more airflow around the structure itself, just to, to keep it dry, if you will.
Andy, a couple of questions.
Yes.
On the local federal aid route funding, uh, you requested nearly 1.7 million. Based on past experience, what kind of percentage of that might we reasonably expect? Are we talking 50, 60%?
We don't know, we've made, for the entire pool, we've probably requested more than half for the region for our projects. It is a challenging, we learned, a challenging program, like most federal programs are in terms of, um, the environmental review process, the design process, fitting it into shoehorn, shoehorning it into the PennDOT contracting system that is not nimble. But we felt that we learned quite a bit in this first round and that, um, I think the other thing going for us, Jim, so I, the, the short answer is I don't know. The long answer is, um, we think because of our experience and because they don't like to break it up into several small projects because of the burden of, that I've just described, that we might have a good chance based with our experience with the prior funding and, and the size of our proposed project. If we're successful, though, what that potentially does, right, is, is, um, it would, you know, if, if there were funds, as council's aware, like 100% of our paving program historically has been borrowed capital funds, um, so any money that we can leverage for these types of resources is money that we're not borrowing and isn't coming out of the general fund in terms of actual operating or debt service expense.
On the Water Street Traffic Project, um, I know at, at the present time, you don't want to catch a red light on Chestnut Street because it's half of eternity to change. Will the new project have camera-controlled lights which will accelerate?
So they will, they will have camera detected, so the camera will detect when a vehicle is there, um, so the old technology, right, is actually loops in the pavement, most of which have been destroyed by milling paving. Once that loop breaks, it's expensive. The new technology, which is that most of our new intersections are all along North Street that were done by PennDOT, the new one at North Main and Randolph, which that project is now officially complete, um, on the bypass, all have cameras that detect when a vehicle is at the situation, and then triggers fast. As opposed to direct timing, it can shorten this, the pre-program cycle to know that you were there and waiting.
Excellent. Thank you.
I have a few questions, uh, Andy as well. Will the city, will we be doing any promotion for this, uh, public CDBG hearing? Can you share the county's post on our Facebook page and things like that?
Yeah, we can do that through, I mean, that's essentially probably through our Facebook page is the, um, I think the county's actually issued their legal notice, is the one I think I'm actually holding, and, um, and then we can promote that on our Facebook page.
Um, the, there's a, there's a light, I imagine it's still out, it had been out for a while on Grove and North, is that because of the Grove Street paving that was going on there?
The traffic signal, when you say light, you mean traffic signal?
Yep, yep.
Okay. Um, so they, if, as my understanding, and I'm looking here, but I don't think he knows, is that the controller has completely failed.
Okay.
Um, so the, the computer, the guts, and that we're waiting on equipment. So it's not related to the paving, it was just that the controller itself is shot, uh, and so we're waiting on equipment. I am nervous about that as the start of school here comes, that, um, that intersection will get significantly more busy, uh, here two weeks from now or so, so, um, I don't know, Seth will have to follow up.
And, and I wonder too, um, kind of similar to, right, the way that we have, uh, this report on, or at least a summary, a summary on the RDA's Working Capital Loan Fund, right? I recognize that, like, lots of, uh, authorities are responding to COVID and the needs that that presents, um, for the folks they serve in different ways, and I wonder if we could get, uh, reports from different authorities, right? How the Mark is responding, how the Market House is responding, um, the water authorities, I mean, if, if that, if it's possible to kind of fully understand how authorities are, are responding to COVID.
Specifically a COVID response, is that your request? Uh, I can make that-
We'd be happy to know what's-
I can make that request, yeah.
Thank you.
Andy, a couple of things, I know you're not prepared for this question because I've been thinking about it.
Love those.
Yeah, well, keep your on your toes. So when council made the decision to allow the restaurants to open up in the alleys and, and the parking lots, did we give an ending term for that at time? And when did we do that? I, I'm sorry, I just don't remember.
It was, I want to say it's end of Sept-, end of September or end of October, maybe.
It's, at least in the cold weather, if not December 31st. I think they were a little different because Voodoo was a little bit different than the other ones, and I can't recall off the top of my head.
I just want to make sure if the weather's good, that we have, they have the ability to continue to do that. Everything that I'm hearing, everyone seems to be enjoying it, that the businesses are picking up, um, it's safe, and, uh, it's just really neat. And one thing I'd like to have council think about for maybe next year is that maybe we can start looking at permanent ways of doing this. I, I think it's good for a local community. I know when we were in Paris, you know, everyone eats outside, you know, it's just, it's just a, a great feeling, so maybe council can start thinking about next year, getting everything in order so the businesses, the restaurants can open up and have more outside activity. I, I don't think this culvert's going to go away by December 31st, um, but if you don't mind thinking about that for the future, and then I, I would kind of like to meet with the businesses, the council as a whole, um, just to get their input, what, what's good about it, what's bad about it, what, what can we do to make it even better? Then my other thing is, under the culvert, with the loss of the parking revenue, of course, we did that also to help the businesses downtown. Is there any kind of funding anywhere available that we could maybe tap into that to recoup that loss?
So as I've reported, the only, right now, the only funding stream at which I'm available is the CARES Act funding that was filtered down to the Commonwealth and then to the counties on a per capita basis. So essentially, lost revenue in any shape or form is not an eligible expense because it can't be backed by an invoice or a, so-
I'd like to see the local business have advantage of that and to keep the businesses going, but I also, we have a tax base that we have to watch for.
Yeah, so, so right now, as far as we know, lost revenue, parking revenue, lost earned income tax revenue, lost real estate tax revenue is not a reimbursable expense under that program. Um, your, to your question, honor, your honor, while you're speaking, December 31st, I'm looking, having to be looking at the licensing with Julian's, and it, it was set to expire December 31st, 2020.
Well, why don't we prepare for next year, um, for these businesses, um, right off the bat? If you guys would be willing to take a look at that. But I'd still like to meet with them and have their input on pros and cons that they've reached.
Sure. I wonder if we could ask, uh, if it might just be easier if we attend, uh, if they're willing to set aside one of the Business Alliance meetings?
Do they all belong to that group?
Um, I, I don't think that there's any kind of, uh, membership formally, I don't-
Yeah, whatever works, just so we can get some input back. I, I'd like to hear from the business manager himself, you know what I mean? So however we can put that meeting together to work. Because I really don't want to take up any more of the staff's time because you guys have so much going on. So I don't have any other questions. Andy, thanks for the report. Did that trigger any other questions for anyone else? Okay, and let's move on to old business authorities, boards, commission appointments. So, uh, we have a letter of resignation. Katie?
Hi, your honor, this is a letter of resignation from Tom Cholak, who is serving on the Redevelopment Authority. Dear council members, please be, please be advised that with considerable regret, I am resigning from the City of Meadville Redevelopment Board of Directors effective August 14th, 2020. Brenda and I will soon be relocating to Tucson, Arizona, serving on the board for the past several years, along with work, along with working with council members, the mayor, city staff, Redevelopment Authority staff, my fellow Redevelopment Authority board members, and the citizens of Meadville, has been a most rewarding experience, and hopefully we have helped make Meadville a better place to live, work, and to conduct business. I am grateful for this opportunity with which council has provided me.
Motion, please. Second?
I'll second.
Roll call? Or discussion, I guess we'll go there. Anybody have any comments?
Um, Mr. Tom, I really liked him, uh, as an asset for the government.
He was a tremendous asset.
I'm just going to take a few minutes because I've known Tom since 2005, when I was appointed the court custodian of Connet Lake Park, and Tom come on board. And we had a, as Jim would tell you, it was a, quite a job to do, and I, I can't thank Tom enough how much time and effort that man has put into our community, not just the Redevelopment Authority, but the county itself with Connet Lake Park. So I, I got to work with Tom in 2005, and I was so pleased when I heard he was coming to the Redevelopment Authority. Uh, we started the downtown business, uh, grants and things for the small businesses, Tom was a big part of that. And, uh, sometimes somebody that does all the work doesn't usually get a whole lot of credit for what they do, so tonight I want to make sure that he gets a lot of credit for his time and effort in our community and in the City of Meadville and Redevelopment Authority, so, Tom, if you're listening, thanks.
I will add to, sorry.
Yeah, go ahead.
No, but I, I got to, as an employee with the Redevelopment Authority, I got to work really closely with Tom through the Entrepreneur Accelerator Grant Program, um, and, uh, other small business support. Uh, he was, he taught me so much, uh, was a very important mentor for me, uh, for reference for, uh, future jobs, um, and I've really enjoyed getting to work with him on, on projects, uh, even, even after that, and, and I love Tom a lot and appreciate the, the work that he's done for our community.
Thank you. All right. With that, we wish him the very best, and roll call, please.
Donahue?
Aye.
McNay?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye with regret.
Your honor, just while we're on, so just general update in terms of boards, authorities, so, um, in your packet is just current vacancies, uh, so we just put that in front of you as a reminder, um, and we've got the Redevelopment Authority listed on there, the vacancy created by Tom. Um, in terms of filling those vacancies, per the recent, uh, recently adopted appointment policy, uh, we issued, I think just late last week, a press release, uh, sort of advertising those vacancies, we put that on our Facebook page, um, and we had directly notified the members, individuals who expressed interest in serving, who had some, prior had supplied letters of interest, we sent them a copy of the policy and an application directly. And what other general updates do we have there, Katie? Oh, also in your list is a, a packet is a list of forthcoming vacancies through, essentially almost to the end of the year, just to give us a heads up of the number of vacancies coming.
Just those who are eligible for reappointment.
Okay. Yeah, so they're not vacancies, is that what your point is? Yeah, they're not vacancies, they're just seats that are eligible for reappointment. So anyhow, we just provide that information for you.
Any questions from council? Okay, let's move on to new business. Hey, uh, decision on Calamar Senior Housing Development Real Estate Act, did we have a resolution already prepared?
So this is a draft resolution in front of you, so we, uh, because we've just introduced this tonight, um, we asked Mike from Calamar to come here, so what we, what, what Shaper Law Firm has prepared, in consultation with both the solicitors of Crawford and Central School District and Crawford County, have prepared a draft resolution, um, that I was proposing that we just consider our September 2nd meeting, if you'd like, so, um, and, and really the, sort of lays out, we actually propose, and I don't know, Gary, do you want to walk through the resolution, or?
Sure. So council, that ordinance actually sunset, uh, October 7th, 2018. For not renewing the ordinance, all we're doing is giving Calamar an extra time period, whatever council thinks is appropriate, we left a blank, that extends their compliance deadline to complete construction. So this resolution is tailored to them, uh, and it fits with, with what we know to be true, which is due to the COVID-19 pandemic, construction activity is actually halted, and they're still dealing with, with material issues that they will overcome. It sounds like it'll need that much time, but if, if council affords them the year that, that staff is recommending, then they should be fine, and then, uh- And then their tax abatement will follow the schedule which council, prior council approved pursuant to the ordinance.
And the school, the other bodies?
We spoke with the school district solicitor as well as county solicitor and they both indicated they, they'll, they will act similarly following your action.
Is there a reason we need to wait till September and not do it this evening? I mean, are you comfortable with what?
Yes.
The resolution is?
Yes, I wrote it.
Okay. If, if council's a minute, I mean, I, if there's not going to be any changes to this, I, I'd like just to get it moved and get it done so they, you guys continue on and you know you're, you're okay. Unless council would prefer and do it in September. So I guess I'm going to ask council, would you be willing to support it tonight?
Tonight is fine.
I, I mean, I'm, I'm not particularly inclined to do more than we've already done in terms of the five-year abatement of taxes. I think an extension is more, more consideration that we need to give. I don't know that that'll change next time either, so.
To be clear, if council doesn't do this, they wouldn't be eligible for the abatement whatsoever. So if the project, so essentially the window to, to apply for the abatement closes October 7th.
Maybe I didn't articulate that as well as I should have. So we're not expanding the timeframe of the abatement, it's just when it starts.
Sure, no, I understand.
Any other feelings, Tom?
I'd like to wait till the second because there's some questions I'd like to, more information I'd like to find out. I don't feel comfortable tonight.
Jim?
I would feel comfortable moving this evening. Basically, just have to get some dates firmed up. And this would also pave the way for the other bodies to, to act perhaps a little bit more quickly.
That was kind of my thinking. I didn't mention that I thought, I, us doing it tonight would help with the school district and the other municipalities.
So it's up to you, council. So if you want to act on it tonight, you can, or you can defer to your September 2nd meeting?
What do you think?
Me? I'd like to wait till the second. There's some questions I'd like to, more information I, I want to know. To make sure I understand exactly what this entails.
Never had it done this way. So, I mean, that's okay. I mean, everybody has a thing.
I'd like to act tonight. I'd like to see this finished.
Well, we could do it two ways. You can, someone make a motion and second it and see if it passes or just go ahead and not?
Actually, Your Honor, you probably would have two separate motions. One would be whether we act tonight or delay till the second. Then the second motion would be whether you adopt a resolution or not. So there's actually going to be two motions.
I'd make a resolution that we act tonight.
I'll second that.
Does that cover everything?
No, there'd be discussion of whether you have to.
I would discuss it.
Okay, any, any further discussion? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McNay?
No.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Okay, now we have to do the resolution, correct? And the dates will be changed then?
We would insert a date of one year from, what, what year are we using? What date are we using?
I'm proposing October 7th, 2021. So in the final whereas clause, you'll see a blank there. We would in, insert the date October 7th, 2021.
Any other corrections that we need to make?
On the first page, there's a blank, second from the bottom also.
That's the same date, yes?
That'd be the same date, Gary?
Gary, the, the second whereas clause, there's the underline, is that?
I believe that was just for their address.
Okay.
Gary, in the second clause, there is a blank after Calamar, is that?
That was for address and.
Okay.
I wanted to make sure we had the name correct up there, entity.
We have someone in the audience who can provide the exact name and the address.
Anything else on that council that you see, make sure you're comfortable with?
Do you want Katie to read it then in its entirety for the?
Once you get all the numbers and all the information you need.
Whereas the City of Needville enacted ordinance number 3742, the Improvement of Deteriorating Real Property or Areas Tax Exemption Act on October 7th, 2015. And whereas pursuant to the act, Calamar applied for and was granted certain tax exemption benefits regarding its senior housing development. Whereas Crawford County and Crawford County School District both extended similar tax exemption benefits to Calamar for the project based upon the city's approval of Calamar's application pursuant to the act. Whereas the act, which sunsets on October 7th, 2018, required that in order to qualify for such tax exemptions, that the improvements and/or residential construction related to the project be completed within two years following the date of termination of the ordinance. Such applicable date to be October 7th, 2020. And whereas due to COVID-19 pandemic, the governor of Pennsylvania in March 2020 declared the existence of a statewide disaster emergency, as well as ordered construction activities halted within the state for a period of time. Whereas on March 19th, 2020, the City of Needville also declared the existence of a disaster emergency in order to be responsive to the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas due to the cessation of construction orders by the governor and related subsequent construction delays related to the COVID-19 pandemic, Calamar does not anticipate completing the project by the required deadline of October 7th, 2020. And whereas pursuant to its inherent authority as a city of a third class and pursuant to its optional charter and such further authority related to its declaration of a disaster emergency, the city shall extend the deadline for the completion of the project to October 7th, 2021 in order to provide relief to Calamar given the delays related to the COVID-19 pandemic and in order for Calamar to receive the intended tax exemption benefits granted pursuant to the act. Now therefore be it resolved and it is hereby resolved by the City of Needville by and through the council of City of Needville, that Calamar shall be granted an extension of time to comply with the construction of the project to qualify for the receipt of tax exemption benefits authorized by ordinance number 3742 of 2015. And such benefits shall be granted, provided that Calamar completes the improvements and/or residential construction related to the project by October 7th, 2021.
Motion?
I would move to adopt.
Second?
Second.
You know, we don't know what the future's going to hold with the, the virus that we're dealing with. And I'd just like to get this done.
That's what I was thinking earlier.
You just?
We might be online.
We have no idea.
Are there any other questions I can answer for you?
Well, I'm ju, I'm just curious, you know, like I was, when I said earlier about what this is, what it means to the taxpayers, what exactly? That's what I want more information about, so I understand completely. It's not that I'm against it, I want to understand what I'm, what we're agreeing to. Some of you guys have that knowledge, I don't have that yet. So that's what I'm trying to, to understand. And I don't think, you know, from now to the second will make a difference, really, for, you know, to make sure that everybody understands exactly what's going on. Again, I don't, you know, know what that means for the taxpayers, if anything at all. But I'd like to make sure that if it does, I know that, that I'm aware of that.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but at the present time, Calamar is still paying tax on the property based on its old assessment. And they will continue to pay tax on the property based on the old exception, assessment until the project is completed and then there will be a phase in where we will get additional revenue. The difference is, instead of getting additional revenue, maybe in 2021, it would be 2022. But we're, it's not as though they're not paying tax already to, to the three entities.
And the five-year abatement schedule that was adopted under this ordinance, it was a five-year program so that essentially in the first year, 100% of the value of the new improvement is abated. So essentially, the new assess, the new assess, increased assess value is 100% abate.
So for example, the taxes on a $12 million building, right?
Probably about a million dollars.
Yes, so in year one, they, they aren't paying tax on the new improvement. They continue to pay tax on what it is assessed at now.
Year two, 80%, 60%, 40%.
Correct. So it's a phased-in taxation of the improvements.
Essentially, the sixth year, then it's 100% taxable.
Actually, it only made about 300,000 because we're talking about assess value per market value.
You know, I just feel that, and I'm quite sure somebody watching this or that everybody's not aware of this. So if, if people understand, they, there's less chance to be a confusion.
With your comments, did that make you feel more comfortable?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, good.
I was here when we did this, so was Leroy, and a lot of this, of the abatement was anything to get somebody in there because we were looking at an empty talent building at the time and we were so happy to have something happening there.
But I'll make sure you're comfortable with the question or the answer. Okay, any other comments, council? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McNay?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
No.
Sterns?
Aye.
Just hope that everything keeps moving in the right direction.
Thank you, council, I appreciate it.
Under new business, we have a discussion, the PA Climate Action Greenhouse Gas Emission Inventory. So I'm not sure, you throw that to you?
I'm going to pass it over to Autumn. Autumn had, Councilman Vogel had, prior to the last meeting, I think, had sent a request out to the agenda and discussed it at the last meeting. And we've shared some information about the program and the opportunity, and then we'll go from there.
Sure. So I think as I sent, as I mentioned last time and I think sent around to council via email and as many of you were on council at the time, in 2010, the city conducted a greenhouse gas inventory. Very recently, a group of citizens has applied to a DEP program to be part of a 2020 PA Climate Action cohort. It afforded us the opportunity to formally join the cohort and update our greenhouse gas inventory using tools that would be provided through the program. The bulk of the work is, will be done by an Allegheny student who will be working on it as their senior project and overseen by an Allegheny college professor, Matt Thuram. I would be willing to serve as the city contact to minimize the impact on staff, time and priorities. And essentially, I'm just looking for consent from the rest of council to formally join the cohort of other communities across PA that are, again, in this PA Climate Action cohort, updating their greenhouse gas inventory in the fall of 2020.
Will this have no impact on our city resources and staff?
I mean, I might have to consult staff to get a few, to get answers on a few questions that I have, but I will be taking the bulk of the work that I can. The student is, in the fall, is supposedly able to take over 90% of the workload. I anticipate that the workload asked of staff will be exceptionally minimal. I'll try to make it as minimal as possible as well.
Andy, you have any comments or?
I, I mean, I'll be perfectly honest with you, Councilman Vogel had approached me at a staff level in early, in July, ahead of, a week or so ahead of the deadline to apply, and I had just indicated that we didn't have the staff capacity to participate. The 2010 inventory, I conducted actually when I worked for the Pennsylvania Environmental Council. I was not a city employee at the time. Council may recall, you might remember Jennifer DeHart, she was an Allegheny college professor. Jennifer, I think, had cancer and died at a young age, mid-project. And, and the city had this grant from DEP to complete the inventory and contracted that with the Pennsylvania Environmental Council. I was the staff that, that conducted it. This is a very, though the, it's a very data-heavy, intensive project, right? In terms of if the scope of work is just the city's, City of Needville's operations and emissions as opposed to the communities, I don't know. Is it just the City of Needville, Autumn?
It is, yeah.
Okay. It's everything from vehicle inventories, miles driven, a research of all records in terms of all electric utility bills, building square footages, operating hours, lots of, which is a very data-intensive project. It will involve researching records in the off-site in the fire station and searching through prior records. I don't know how many years, I don't know the protocol now, how many years data they like to capture, but it will definitely be a data-intensive project for anyone involved in it.
I guess one of the questions I have, and I always worry about this, and our solicitor's sitting right here, is when we have data and, you know, past records, I just don't want anyone going through those records and making a mess. And I'm not saying anyone would do that, but past records are very important for the future. So if you do, do you have to get that kind of information? Are you going to have to go to the, the fire station and go through all the records? So if Autumn's not going to be there, I, I just don't want anybody going through our records that we're responsible to keep. Unless you tell me differently that I have a concern.
I think that's wise, that you should control personnel or access.
I mean, I'm not against doing it, I just want to make sure that we don't put somebody, you know, in our records and we go up there and we find thousands of records all over the floor. Because those are important to us. So how do we, how would you control that without using a lot of staff?
We would, we'd just have to have a staff assigned to accompany and review. I mean, there may be some reports pending that we can pull digitally in terms of utility usage, I mean, but.
And some of that they're doing, they're able to do in bulk. So, right, if there are municipalities that are purchasing from the same utility supplier, right? They can, they can do a bulk request for that information. So they're trying to make it as, the contracted agency that the DEP is working with is trying to make it as, you know, minimally intensive as possible. And I'd certainly be willing, you know, I can coordinate with staff, but I'd be willing to, you know, be the one, you know, or accompanying the one to, to.
That's my only concern, is to be on record that those, those records remain in the building where they're at, in the order that they're in. Because that's very important, especially if audits come about.
Autumn, what happens if, it's not clear to me what, what action you're requesting this evening. What happens if, if council doesn't? I mean, it sounds like they've already, they, I don't know who they is, a citizen, a student, someone has already applied and DEP has already accepted. Is that what has happened?
Yeah, so, I mean, essentially, right, essentially then this, this group will, it's my understanding, will continue.
Who's the group, though? We must say the group.
It is a group of, of residents that's interested in updating the Needville Climate Action Plan.
Couldn't they get the information through like a Freedom of the Note and file papers?
And within five days, we will drop everything in response, yes.
Yeah, that's what I was going to say, you're probably better off to let Autumn do it than this.
I think we maybe.
I really wanted to know, I would find out.
Let's play it on the safe side. If, if there's going to be individuals there, I want to know who's in the building and who has.
Well, I'll take care of that, right? I will control access to the records as city clerk and, and will make sure that our records are, are managed properly.
Any other comment?
No.
I'd be interested to see how things changed.
Yeah, I think it'd be interesting.
It's kind of interesting in the streetlights, I know they've been changing them over to, you know, to simple things like that.
The parking garage with the lighting and stuff.
We're not in this big building anymore.
So staff's going to be willing to help with that?
I just want to make sure. I just don't see that we have the staff. I have no problem with pursuing this, but if we don't have the staff time now, how are we going to have it with, with an additional work requirement placed on them? So I'd be looking at some middle ground where there is absolutely no staff cost in terms of time or money to get this accomplished.
Yeah, and so, and so, just to, just to address that a little bit, Jim, right? Andy mentioned that we had, had spoken earlier, right, and his concern was staff time and, and also, right, that, you know, the City of Needville has a climate action plan and it, you know, many of the items in there might still be applicable as, as ways in which to change. And so the middle ground that was struck is that rather than asking for the representative to come from city staff, that, that would, that would take on the work of, you know, submitting official requests to utility companies on behalf of the city or something like that, right? Like, I'm willing to step in and do that to try and eliminate. I, I feel like I can't promise that zero city, right? If Andy's going to step up to control, you know, who's in the building, who's not, I can say, right? I don't think any of the other, I don't think any of the folks in the group, right? It might be the, the student and myself that are, that are looking to access the, the data and the information. And that's kind of as. that's kind of as middle of the ground as I think that we can get to, to minimize the, what we're asking of staff in terms of time and priority, and...
Is this grant-funded?
It is, so there's no cost to, to be part of this, and then also, so I will say too, it's a full-year program, and right now, we're just, the group is just interested in committing to just the greenhouse gas inventory, which is just the fall, and, and to not take on the spring, not necessarily commit to the, the spring cohort, which is creating a climate action plan, which, again, you know, we can just kinda update the plan we have with new information.
So would some of that funding be available, be diverted to the city if we had to hire a temporary, part-time person to assist with this?
Yeah, so the, my understanding of the program, right, is that the funding is, has gone to DEP and maybe they've, right, subcontracted out to make available some tools, to provide webinars and, and provide their own staff time to meet with people, we won't see, we won't see money, but we also won't be asked at any point to, right, pay anything, right? So, so it's not like grant money coming to us necessarily, be entering into a cohort that, right, with no kind of financial obligation.
And how do you see this helping in the future, just quickly?
Yeah, well, I mean, I think that you and Sean pointed it out, right, you know, a lot of changes have been made to the city's operations since 2010, that can serve as a benchmark, and we can see kind of how far we've come, right, in terms of the climate action plan that was developed, along with our original greenhouse gas inventory, and make, you know, make adjustments.
So that information could be used for future grant money?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. You willing to take responsibility on?
Yes. I am.
I don't have to yell at you.
This is just a discussion tonight?
Right. Well...
This is, yeah, this is looking, the cohort is starting, we don't need to show any kind of record, but I, I don't, you know, want to be moving into the work, you know, without Council knowing and being, you know...
But it's, I think, to your question, is there a future action, is there a resolution of Council, or is it, are you looking just for consensus of Council or a majority of Council to proceed with the project?
Sure, I mean, I, there's nothing that we have to show in terms of a resolution, I guess it would just be up to Council, right, what you're more comfortable with, if, you know, if a record in the minutes of consent of Council is enough, or if we'd wanna do a formal resolution at next meeting, I mean, it's, it's, this is good enough for me, but I, I, you know, I don't want...
Gary, what would be best to protect the city? If you don't mind me throwing that question out.
No, that's fine, I'm not completely clear on, it sounds like you don't need a resolution.
They, they don't need that, so it would just be on our, it's, it's, if it, you know, if we feel it's in our best interest, if it protects us in any way or something, if we wanna move forward that way, it's, it's up to, I mean, it's up to us, I just don't wanna move forward without...
If there was a motion, Autumn, would it be to allow you and that group access to collect data to support that program, would it be as simple as that?
Um, I think it would be for the city of Meadville to join the 2020 PA Climate Action Cohort.
And...
And as such, myself and you.
Maybe DeNAU is representative to...
Yes, sure, yeah.
I think that's fine.
You're talking about just consensus, and, I mean, I, I would support it as long as it does not cost us time or money from the city.
I think that's fine, we can proceed by what you just indicated amongst yourselves.
Any other comments from Andy? So where are we at then, we just, it's discussion now?
I think you just gave, well...
Just gave a...
Is everyone nodding yes? If everyone's nodding yes, then...
Well, let's just do it this way. You in favor?
Yes.
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 So you have consensus.
If it doesn't cost money.
Make sure that's in your somewhere.
Getting receipts along the way.
Conditional consensus.
Okay, great.
So you're gonna run the show.
Got it.
Wow, that was a tough one, that. That's only one little thing we've worked with. Okay, now let's just move on. Resolution authorizing signature for Stop Violence Against Women Grant Agreement.
Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that the attached agreement is hereby approved and adopted substantially in the form attached heretofore, as and for a binding and effective agreement of the City of Meadville in accord with its terms, and the Mayor, Controller, and the City Clerk is hereby authorized and directed to execute and to attest such copies of the attached agreement and the manner required by law, as may be reasonably required for the purposes of the parties thereto.
Motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Andy.
Counsel, I had sent you a note prior to this meeting, this is sort of a, the Stop Grant Program is a, is a program that's been going on in Crawford County for, my understanding it, over a decade, it's federal funding provided under the, I think it's an actual act called this Stop Violence Against Women Act, and in this case, the, our police department has been a participating member in the coalition that has, has executed a strategy to reduce domestic violence and respond to and to support victims of domestic violence. It's federal funds that are then granted to the Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, and then Crawford County is identified in this agreement as the sub-grantee. We are identified as a contractor, and so they're the sub-grantee, they're receiving the money, we are then a contractor providing services under the, the grant contract, and the opportunity before us now is to be a funded partner in the Stop Grant Program. Heretofore, the Crawford County District Attorney's Office has used funds to, to actually fund the position of an assistant district attorney for the prosecution of domestic violence, I think that funding piece still remains, and they had used other funding for a, I'll say, a victim coordinator position, it's that piece of funding that's proposed to come to the city of Meadville to support the, the overall coalition's effort. This would bring $37,500 of new revenue into the city to support, it's, it's a redefined position in our police department, so we have two detectives, two sergeant investigators, two detectives on our staff. Under this proposal, we would be sort of retooling their job responsibilities, having them specialize more, and that we would have one detective who would specialize and oversee the casework of domestic violence-related cases, our other detective would focus then on general drug work, drug investigations, cooperation with the Attorney General's Office. They would both still maintain a caseload of general crime, if you will, but they would specialize, and it's that specialization and focus that would make us eligible for this funding. And so the action tonight would be to enter into this contract as a contractor with Crawford County, who is the sub-grantee of the Pennsylvania Crime, Pennsylvania Commission on Crime and Delinquency, if that makes sense.
Yeah, to me, it does.
Andy, will the stipends paid to us quarterly cover all of the additional costs?
So, we've, yeah, so there's no, this, if anything, it's maybe relieve some pressure on the general fund and brings in additional resources to pay an existing physician.
Magic words.
So, so it's relieving, sort of budget relieving in this case, so we don't anticipate, there might be some minor increased expenses related to training, et cetera, but in terms of new resources that are budget relieving, that's essentially what's proposed here.
Andy, how is, how is it determined which of the two detectives would be retooled in this way?
It is at the direction of Chief Totten.
Any other questions? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
D, resolution authorizing corrective special warranty deed. Katie?
Resolved by the Council of the City of Meadville that whereas the City of Meadville desired to sell a portion of excess land located on Pine Street and adjoining various property owners, said land then known as City Lot Number 40-A-33, and whereas on November 4th, 1999, the Meadville Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Meadville recommended the approval of a subdivision as submitted on a survey prepared by Ronald D. Baker, registered professional land surveyor, dated October 14th, 1999, and whereas said recommendation was approved by the Meadville Planning and Zoning Commission on November 4th, 1999, and whereas said subdivision divided said city lot number 40-A-33 into various parcels, including lot numbers 1 through 5 of said subdivision plan, whereas City Council passed a resolution authorizing the quitclaim of real estate adjacent to five lots along Pine Street and the third ward of the City of Meadville on June 13th, 2000, authorizing the quitclaim of real estate adjacent to five lots on Pine Street, said lots being the lots labeled as lots, lot numbers 1 through 5 on said subdivision plan. And whereas said resolution included a term providing for two restrictions on each quitclaimed lot, the first restriction being the lot shall not be transferred or conveyed separately from other adjoining property of the respective adjoining landowners, and the second restriction being title to the lot shall revert to the City of Meadville upon its attempted transfer or conveyance to or ownership by a tax-exempt entity. Said second restriction shall herein hector be referred to as the reversionary restriction. Whereas the City of Meadville conveyed lot number 1 of said subdivision plan to Mick Verano?
Sure.
Verano.
Verano, and Mary Verano by deed dated June 27th, 2000, as set forth in Crawford County Record Book 479, page 1297, which contained the reversionary restriction, and whereas Robert W. Verano, agent for Mary E. Verano, also known as Mary Verano, conveyed property identified as Crawford County map number 3500-40-A-3 to Anna Stolzfoetz and Shalonda Stolzfoetz by deed dated May 14th, 2013, as set forth in Crawford County Record Book 1129, page 479, said subject property containing said lot number 1 identified therein as parcel 2. Whereas said deed of May 14th, 2013 contained the reversionary restriction, and whereas said reversionary restriction created a cloud on the title to the subject property, resulting in the property owners being unable to transfer good and marketable title, and whereas the city desires to remove said reversionary restriction as it pertains to the subject property. Now therefore be it resolved that the City of Meadville, by and through the Council of the City of Meadville, hereby authorizes the City of Meadville to remove the reversionary restriction as it pertains to the subject property. Appropriate city officials and officers are hereby authorized and directed to take all actions and to execute any and all other appropriate documents as being necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution.
Thanks, Gary.
Katie, you did a great job on that.
We need to work on your German.
Rashatoma would be proud of you for reading the entire document.
Yeah.
Motion?
Second.
Second. So that takes care of all the issues for them to...
Yes.
Get the property and...
It eliminates the cloud on the title from the reversionary clause. It keeps the joint clause, which makes sense.
And I like the part that it comes back to the city if it goes, the section...
No, that's what we're...
That's what we're getting rid of.
Getting rid of, I'm sorry.
Yes.
So is that what you would have called, a fee simple determinable?
Hmm. That's a good question.
Or fee simple subject to condition subsequent?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
I believe the latter. All right.
You pressed the hell out of me, Jim.
That's bar exam material, that's good.
Boy, let me tell you what, let's just go for it. Motion? You got that? Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
Jim, can I borrow you a deal? When I go to buy some crockery.
So, Counsel, by way of reminder, right, so this, there's exhaustive detail in here
that sort of sets the record of what the transactions were, but essentially, there were five parcels conveyed, subdivided, conveyed to adjacent homeowners back when this was done in 99, 2000, and so we will pro, we're gonna write at least a letter to the remaining property owners to proactively offer similar relief and terms, so you may see some of the similar action of other properties that were impacted by that come before you in the future.
Okay. Councilmember's statements. Larry, I'll start with you tonight.
Well, I'd just like to say thank you to everyone for being here, staying safe, and just glad to see you back and healthy, and I'm just thankful to see Meadville, you know, we're working together to make Meadville a better place. There's still things, like I said earlier, I don't understand, I don't, I don't know, so don't get upset if I ask questions or if I hold out, that's, I'm here to learn. Thank Jim and Andy, you guys, for your patience, and just thank all you guys for being here, and let's get ready for school, hopefully.
Yeah. Jim?
It'll take a while, but okay. First of all, I'd like to...
No big words.
To thank Evan Hasko and his, for a job well done, and wish him a long, happy, and healthy retirement. We appreciate all this service. I'd like to congratulate Patrick Wiley on his appointment as fire chief. With everything that's going on in cities throughout the nation, he has a daunting task ahead of him, and I appreciate his willingness to take the helm. Note with sadness that in the next few days, we would ordinarily be heading full tilt into the Crawford County Fair, it's not gonna happen this year, that's unfortunate, because young people don't have the opportunity to showcase their animals and their crafts and agricultural products. This twin initiative like that should be applauded and recognized, but hopefully next year. And finally, on a little bit lighter note, this summer, my son spent a tremendous number of hours and resources cultivating a vegetable garden, and it's literally bearing fruit. And the good news is that after some calculating, I figured that if we can sell each tomato for $52... So my hat is off to those who dedicate their lives being the rest of us. Meanwhile, we'll see you just before Labor Day, but have a good rest of the summer.
I'm getting you a shirt with a great big dollar sign on it.
That's exactly why I don't have a garden, Jerry. It's a lot of work for very little return. I, I just, first of all, this, the Meadville Medical Center did send out this letter today, and it's kinda disconcerting here, however, over the past several weeks, you've noticed a rather concerning increase in cases, the severity of illness associated with some patients tested positive for COVID, several recent cases required hospitalization and some required admission intensive care unit, several patients been critically ill, and one recent case proven fatal. A lot of people think that this isn't here or isn't gonna come here, and they're not wearing masks, which I can't stand to talk in it, but anyway, they, I've seen him at Tops and at Walmart, there was a couple the other day, and I just wish people would realize that's all he's really asking for you to do is wear a mask and to practice social distancing, and, I mean, it is here and it's gonna get worse, which people didn't realize. I'd like to thank Calamar, I, my tool shop started in that old town building up there, and Andy worked there keeping it going, I remember when he was there, and now it's all gone, but I, this is a taxable use for that property, and it's a good use, and it actually is a lot of housing, and we'll see how it all turns out, but I did, I'm really happy that it, that they're doing something with that land, because I thought that land would sit there forever. And another thing was, the Market House is, is doing some, I was in the Tribune the other day, and they're doing a makeover, and they're trying to change things a little bit, and they're asking you to donate a little bit of money, and it's not that much, and if you get a chance to get down there and, it's meadvilmarkethouse.org, and see if you can help out, it's a, Market House is a community asset, it's been there my entire life, and I'd like to see it continue for another lifetime or two. That's about it. Thanks.
Autumn?
Yeah, just to pick up, pick up on a few of Sean's points, the Market House, I know this weekend, they're doing their first pop-up pickup event where they'll, it'll be stationed at a local farm, and you can pick up food from, this time it's Kettle Lake Kitchen, but between that and getting ready for curbside pickup and to-your-door delivery, the Market House is doing a lot to, to change what they can offer, to, to bring in some more revenue and to meet people's needs right now. Also, pick up a little bit, I mean, you know, the Medical Center, the, the letter that was sent out, kind of sobering us, right, about like what, how COVID is affecting the community, you know, has been circulating on Facebook today, particularly disconcerting as we're about to go into the school year, and we are about to have 1,400 students and their families come to Meadville, you know, so it's even more reason to just be careful, touch hands, practice social distancing, do all of the things that feel annoying, but we know we should do. And lastly, not to undercut Jim's really great business plan, which I think is useful, but there are, there are some, some great community...
but there are, there are some, some great community gardens and the pop-up, the city gardens that tomatoes are in season. So if you, if you see tomatoes, like, behind the city building and next to churches, pick them or else they'll, they'll go to waste. And you can drop your $52 at the city building for each one.
Larry, you had a...
Yeah, I just want to, you know, Sean mentioned the COVID. Unfortunately, I lost two family members in the last two months to COVID. Before it hit home with me, I was kinda, well, does it or does it not? Seeing them suffer and, and the loss, take it serious, because it is serious. I don't care what party you're with or whatever, they're dead. And it doesn't matter what party you're with. You know, we need to, we really need to follow the guidelines. Wearing a mask, yeah, it's uncomfortable, you don't wanna do it, but the alternative is far worse than what wearing a mask is. So just, let, let's be safe. If we're gonna beat this, we've all gotta work together and keep our mask on, wash our hands, and do what's asked of us. That's the only way we're gonna, we're gonna beat this.
Thanks for asking. I am doing much better now. Surgeries are all finished, I hope, and I can't breathe with this. I'm gonna echo what Jim said. Jim, very nice comments about both Evan and Pat coming on board. I do wanna point out, because you know, when, when we talk about the Calamar projects and, and what we've done this evening, I, we really need to point out the RDA because the RDA did a lot of work with Calamar to bring them here to begin with and continue to work with them, along with our city staff, making, making it easier for them to bring a new business in. And housing is a new business. And it took an empty spot that we thought were gonna be up there for many, many years, just a pile of dirt, like Sean said. They got it cleaned up environmentally safe now, the property's being reused and it's gonna generate tax dollars eventually nicely for the city of Meadville. So I just wanna point out to the RDA, because we've got the chairman here, thank you and the board for working with Calamar and all the businesses that you do to try to help in the city. So thank you. With that, you guys have all said it, you know, a mask are the safe thing. I had an individual just pass away recently and it's nothing to mess with. So kinda keep that in back of your mind. And I, I hate to be the bearer of bad news, this isn't gonna be over November 4th. This is gonna be going on until the, the beginning of the year. I have friends in Canada that can't come back, friends of ours, yours and mine, that are actually stuck in Canada because the border's closed and they, they're afraid it's gonna be closed until the first of the year eventually. So, you safe, be safe. And with that, I'll have a motion to adjourn to an executive session for...
Real estate and pending litigation.
Okay.
Second?
Roll call.
Donahue?
Aye.
McKnight?
Aye.
Roa?
Aye.
Vogel?
Aye.
Sterns?
Aye.
We're adjourned.